Regular Town Council Meeting, Town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, February 4th, 2019.
Oh my goodness. Well hello y'all, three minutes later or so. Welcome to the regular Town Council Meeting, Town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, February 4th, 2019. Um, let's see here.
Yeah.
Mr. Ringo?
Yes, sir.
Do you remember the first word to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
Okay, let's go. Let's stand up and let's do that.
Aye. I will take this as a right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wasn't expecting three-part harmony. Public announcements, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but if you've got ground that's been disturbed, and I want to take special, say a special thanks to whoever's responsible for bringing Globe Chamomile, aka stinkweed, to the Sonoran Desert. It's a wonderful thing, and there's a special place in hell for you, whoever you are. I have no other comments tonight. Call to the public.
Carrie Smith.
Did you want to talk to us?
I'll just come off, Doc.
Ms. Ellie.
Come on, peoples. Come on, peoples. Come on, Johnny.
Council Mayor, great to see you guys, ready to start a new year. So, I'm gonna let Kristen go first, we're all gonna kind of share our time, because we're all talking about the same stuff, if that is okay. So, I will start with, I'll say Ellen Allseaver, 5995, East Yellow Run North.
Kristen Lewis, 34836, North 52nd Street, Cave Creek. So, we all know that we've all been a part of our community for a long time. We've done Wild West Days, thanks to Johnny, thanks to everybody, and based on past history, we are going, and our community, we have been asked to start a new community chamber quasi-events and business association. Thank you, Susan. So, based on that, I believe, we're gonna have our first meet and greet at the Buffalo Chip on Thursday at 6:00, and we are going to talk about the 150th anniversary of our lovely town of Cave Creek. We're gonna talk about Wild West Days, which Johnny is a major part of, and wicked, and kind of envelop business-to-business communications for our town. I am a business, I do a lot in business in our town, and I think all of us do. So, that being said, I'll let Johnny talk.
You only got three minutes.
I only got three minutes, okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman and Woman, and Mrs. Town Manager. Uh, Miss Town. Um, you know, all the volunteers in our unique town of Cave Creek are, to help support this town, from the museum, to the info center, and to everyone here, Ms. Ellie and Kristen, and there's a lot more that are not here, are just as important as all of you to support this town. And, uh, and we have a lot of ideas to come up, and to continue supporting our town of Cave Creek, and it's not anymore in the past, or even present, but rather the future. And that's who we represent, the future of our town of Cave Creek, and all the special events that we are continuing to do with lots of volunteers. And so, and it also lies on your watch, the future of Cave Creek. And we're just here to support our town, and we just want support from all of you. Thank you.
That's it?
No. Okay, so, I'm, we're here mostly because we really need to start thinking about this celebration that we have coming up, I think it's really important, 150th celebration that we want, we'd like to get done.
Three minutes.
And, you didn't tell everybody else that. So, I, I wanna know from you guys how much the town wants to, what you guys wanna do, how much you wanna be involved, how much we can help with, how much we should be doing, what the scope of this event is, you know, it's, it's, could be a huge event. I think it should be a huge event, I think that Cave Creek needs to move forward and really start promoting, um, in a, in a big way, you know, there's lots of little towns that are doing really, really well, promoting a lot of things about, that are, that are just inherent here. We have western culture, we have heritage that we can celebrate, you know, we also have, we are the gateway to the national park that we, or the national force that we live to, next to. And there are so many small businesses trying to glean, you know, work out of people that are coming, so, we'd like to support everyone, and some of these little businesses that haven't really had a lot of support, and of course, all the businesses that have historically had a lot of support. But, I, we're trying really hard with this to get everybody involved, and really put out a good, almost like a travel website, as far as the marketing goes, and really support the community on a financial level. We would love any input that Council might have on this. Uh, we're, we're here to work with the town, in a big way. So, I think that's all for me. But I really would like to start a conversation, I'm not 100% on how we can do that, but somebody let me know what we can do. Agenda is it.
Good.
We just wanted to tell you that we're doing it first.
Well, I, I do have a question. Can I ask a question?
I don't know if we're allowed to do that, right?
Well, maybe we could do that if, sneak, if you truly have a, if you can't have discussion, I think you could have a simple question.
Okay.
So that you, so you can give direction to have it put on, put on the agenda, that's how you could.
That would be great, thanks.
Do you have a name for your new organization? We're actually starting to think about that, we're going to do, we've talked to Tech for Life, we're gonna do a polling, honestly, because, you know, I was the Vice President of the CCMEA, and Ellen was a very integral part, and so was Johnny, was the President for years. We want something that's new, fresh, but also, what represents our town. So, in that aspect, we're gonna probably do some kind of thing with Wes, or something, to, to put a name out there, and just say, hey, what do you guys think? Because we want it, bring it to the community, we want this to be a part of you guys. I don't want to be a part of Scottsdale, I want to be Cave Creek, and that is the biggest thing that I can honestly say about the situation.
I do think it's important to say that we are not gonna be a chamber, and we're not gonna be a merchant association. This is a different entity, we're working with, um, a CPA and accountant, or an accountant and a lawyer, to find the correct wording, and then I think that the name will come. So, we're going as fast as we can.
I think it's important to differentiate who you are versus what these organizations are and what they do. I agree, and I want our community to have input in it.
I think we've gone about as far as we can go.
Yes, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, if you stood up there and called us names, we could recall your names back, but otherwise, we're...
Any ideas would be great.
Do we have any more, uh, no more slips? All right, uh, let's see here. It would be Town Manager Report, but I understand that she doesn't have a...
Well, let me just use the opportunity to say, I've, I've met with Ms. Ellie, and we've, we've spoken about the event, and it is a, a unique, large event for the town, and staff would be very supportive of participating and, and helping with the event, but in terms of financial obligation to assist with such an event, that would be part of the budget process, so, it would be good to have, um, the item on an agenda to, to kind of gauge what Council members are thinking, because that will help give direction in terms of budgetary commitment for the next fiscal year budget, so.
Yeah, it's not every town in Arizona can have 150th birthday now, is it?
I do, well, and, you know, and how we're gonna go about sponsorship, and what we're looking for in terms of money coming in to help support the, the event, so that the town isn't the sole supporter of something, that large, if what they're envisioning is pretty, pretty large, so. We certainly are willing to participate.
All right, thank you. Moving around along, Consent Agenda, Recommendation of Approval of Permanent Extension of Premises for Harold's Cave Creek Corral, requested by Daniel Piacquaddio to add a volleyball court to the original licensed drawing. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
A second.
All right, all the, um, yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Opposed? Okay, we don't need to take a roll call on that one, all seven of us agreed. All right, moving around along, General Agenda Item Presentation, Council Discussion of the Quarterly Financial Report by the Town Finance Director. Mr. Weddigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor, um, I just wanted to give my quarterly report, so, this is for the results of the first six months of fiscal year 19, compared to the first six months of fiscal year 18 on a cash basis. So, we'll be going over the results of revenue and expenditures that were incurred during that time period, and then, other items that we'll be addressing will be, uh, future debt service payments, or, or cash balances of December 31st, as well as, I was requested to talk about some fraud prevention, steps that the town's involved in, and I thought I'd give a little background about municipal fraud with that. So, on the first slide, basically shows the total revenues of, of all governmental funds, this is the, not including the water and wastewater funds, um, this is just the governmental side, and you can see that with 50% of the year lapsed, we have realized 53% of our budgeted revenues, while only incurring 28% of our budgeted expenditures. Now, some of that is due to the fact that grants are included in governmental funds, and grants, we, uh, basically create a, an authority to receive grants, and also the expenditure authority, so, it kind of artificially inflates the expenditures that we could have had, um, and they wouldn't be incurred unless we received a grant, but, but still 28% is good, a good indicator that we are well within our expenditure limitation, and following the budget that was adopted by Council, um, in June of 2018, for this fiscal year. On the next slides, you, you get more detail about the revenues and typical categories, these are also conforming to categories found in our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, so you can look at those for comparison purposes if you desire, but again, the total is 53% of budgeted revenues have been realized already in 50% of the year. Um, I don't really have anything remarkable to report on it, except for, uh, sales tax, local sales tax has been very strong in the first half of the year. Typically, it's a little weaker in the first half of the year, and stronger in the second half of the year, but, uh, so this is good news, that we've already realized 53%.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is that all right? Under rents and royalties, under FY 2018, actual $70,444, and then in 2019, $29,753, but your budget is $141.5. Why would it be so high, if we're not even gonna get close to reaching that level?
Um, I, I don't know, relatively speaking, I, pardon me, Councilmember, thank you for the question, but I actually don't know the progress of certain revenues that we had anticipated receiving, in terms of the progress of collections, so I can't really comment in detail, but that's a great question, and I can send you a more detailed response.
Or you could just look into it for the next fiscal year's budgeting purposes, which I know are coming up.
Yes, and then indeed, that's what we will, will be doing with every line item.
Well, good, because the same thing kind of applies under interest. Um, it's 161% over budget. It just doesn't make any sense to me, why it's so high.
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilmember Royer. Um, we, we underestimated the amount of interest that we realized, most of the interest is earned with, with the state-run local government investment pool, um, and it has been running higher, but I, I was very conservative in estimating that amount of revenue. Uh, as you've seen in the last couple of months, the stock market has fluctuated quite a bit, a lot of the returns are dependent upon related investments, that may also fluctuate with that, so, I, I've always been overly conservative in that regard, so.
Okay. If we can keep an eye on those, that'd be good.
So, on the next slide, you can see expenditures by function, and you can see that we're well within our budget, and, uh, there really wasn't anything really remarkable in this area either, in terms of non-compliance with budget, on a more detailed level, that I didn't, I, I've not included in this presentation, but again, you can see more detail if you were to go online, enter our website, and, and go to the finance department, I have a link to our document library, and within the document library, there is a December Budget to Actual Report, and you can look at every line item there, for revenues and expenditures. Go to the next slide. So, here's the first slide of the enterprise operations, and this is overall for all three operations, and it basically is indicating that we have realized the majority of revenue is in the top line for fines, fees, and we're at about 46%, and we're at about 25% of budget expenses, and the reason why it's so low in percentage is because the debt service payment is, this is on a cash basis, the first debt service payment is interest-only, and it's made on January 1st, but if, again, if you're looking at the line item detail for all of the separate funds, it, it still looks like they'll be within their budget, so I had nothing extra, special to report, relative to the individual line items within it. On the next slide, we get...
Excuse me, but I have a question on that too.
Yes, sorry.
Um, is it standard to include transfers in, on this type of a slide? I don't understand why we're including that, if we're just looking at what our revenues and expenses are, why don't we incorporate how we're going to pay for things?
Um, I, I include that because that is the total source of resources that that particular operation is, been allotted to rely on for their expenses. So, by excluding it, I would have to create another slide by which I would have to explain when and why that existed in a separate slide, so.
I just don't know if that's a standard operating procedure in most accounting practices.
Uh, as I said before, this is the outline that is in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and the structure of that report is dictated by generally, generally accepted, by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and that's the generally accepted accounting principles that we follow as an entity. So, these reports are in line with those reports, so, that's why the format is the way it is. It was, I relied on an existing format.
Okay.
Not my own. On the next slide.
I, oh, I'm sorry, I have one last question on that slide.
Sure.
What is, under expenses, what is, what's covered under services?
Services are engineering services, any kind of consulting, laboratory services, some services that are, that are maintenance, in, 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 in terms of having a third-party come in to do some kind of maintenance, whether it's on electronic component, or...
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, on this slide, this is just focused on the wastewater enterprise fund, and again, it shows that we're about 11% of, or sorry, 30% of the major revenues that were realized, that were budgeted for and anticipated, and then, we're at about 15% overall on expenses, but again, it's, it doesn't include the first debt service payment, nor does it include the, the final debt service payment, so, that's still, if you look at the line item detail, they're still within their budget authority. The revenues for all the utilities, I just wanna step back to that, there was a, an estimation of what the impact might be if certain rates were considered, unfortunately, we are not to the point where the rates were considered in this fiscal year, so, at this point, they haven't been, uh, either considered finally, or implemented at all, there's no expectation of when that would occur at this point, so, these numbers are a little bit below their target, because the target was estimated to be higher. Um, on the next slide, we show the Cave Creek Water System, and, um, the Cave Creek Water System indicates there's about 49% of the revenues were realized, and about 30% of the expenditures, and again, it's, it's a little misleading, because the debt service isn't here, and, 'cause it's just on a cash basis, but even if you look at the report, you can see in detail that's online, that there isn't anything out of significance that isn't compensated for some other line item that's under budget, so.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I noticed that the materials and supplies are quite high, that, that would not, that would be a real cash outlay. Is that expected to come in long-range, or is that front-loaded, or do you expect to be over in that area?
Um, I, I, there, there were some expenditures for materials, and it, that were related to the maintenance for the replacement of the filter media, and I believe that's why it's higher than normal, but that'll be offset by the under-expended capital line item. So, it was just a, a shifting of where it was recognized versus where it may have been budgeted for.
Is that permissible to move between line items, so you have a capital budget that's approved, and you can move between the two?
Uh, yes, at a department level, it isn't necessary to balance between line items or categories of expenditure types, it's only necessary to meet the threshold, the maximum amount budgeted, so, it may not have been that the filter media was actually considered in the capital, but because it was purchased in, in fiscal year 19, it had to be recognized somewhere.
And this is probably not, not even to you, but I, I think there's a clear difference between money that's spent for an expense versus something that's capital that's going to have a future value versus a contemporary expense, there is an incredible difference in the two, in the...
I understood, but, but what we capitalize, okay.
That's what I'm saying, there's an incredible difference in the future value of a capital expense than there is in the, you know, just an expense for running the business.
Right. Uh, Councilmember, thank you for the question. Sometimes there are items that are expended in line items, like materials or supplies, or sometimes there's line items that are used to expend in, for capital, and, and within each of those, if they don't meet the capitalization requirement, they're not capitalized or considered really capital, that has no real impact on the bottom line, which is how much you spent for the fiscal year, so. Again, this is on a cash basis, so, these expenses won't actually be there when they're capitalized, they'll be removed and reclassified as an asset versus an expense.
Oh, you're saying you just haven't made the transfer yet?
Yeah, that happens at the end of the year. Your budgets, your budget, your budget's basically formatted on a modified accrual basis, and so, it, it treats all expenses, or expenditures, or outlays of capital, or outlays of money, as an expense or expenditure relative to the budget. So, the budget's on a modified accrual basis, but the books are on a full accrual basis relative to the enterprise fund.
So, you, you would agree with my statement that, that a, that it is important to keep capital items as capital items, and expense items, expense items, within the rules, than your accounting rules?
Well, this is a, this is...
Because the capital has a future benefit.
Yeah, yes, and that's what actually does happen by operation at the end of the year, but we're reporting on a cash basis, and are, are basically, another slang for modified accrual is modified cash, and, and so, that's where you budget everything that you have, a realization that you're going to outlay cash for, regardless of whether it's capitalized or not, and then, you, you, when you do the GASB statements for enterprise fund, you do full accrual, so that's when it converts to a long-lived asset, with depreciation recognized. As you, if you look at the budget report in detail again, going back to what's available online, you can see there, there is no amount allocated or budgeted for depreciation, for that reason, it's not considered in a modified accrual world, it's just in a full accrual world.
Thank you.
And on the next slide, we have Desert Hills, um, and you can see that revenue's at about 47% of what was projected, and expenses are down at 25%, and again, you know, it's mostly due to that debt service, in terms of, this is on a cash basis, so, the interest that was accrued and payable on January 1st is not included, so. If you look at the next slide, it's our debt service, and this is just a reminder of how much that the debt service is, in terms of total, the total amount that would be outlaid on January 2nd is $773,251, and the amount that will be due on July 1st will be $4,271,864. On the next slide, we have our cash balances. So, the total cash on hand is actually $19,431,583, and then I, I do an adjustment here for the debt service reserves, what we estimate to be what WIFA would require of us for our repair and replacement fund, and as well as our one-year of debt service, and that's the $6,975,706, and that left us with $12,455,877. Okay, and then this next section, uh, so someone had given me an article, a little bit sensationalistic, I think, but, on, uh, fraud in municipal environments, and, so I just wanted to kind of define fraud, it's bribery, kickbacks, theft of property and cash, and a waste of resources, and, uh, I just wanted to let you know that cases of corruption or fraud like this typically happen less often in governmental settings than in for-profit settings, or all other organizations, but the most prevalent kind of fraud that we experience is through billings from third parties. So, we receive billings from third parties that are either misstated, or for things that don't, weren't actually purchased, or, or services that weren't actually rendered. Um, and then, and then related to that is a, kind of a, uh, purchasing issues that might occur as well, so, and then the, the second most prevalent is theft of property, so actual property is just removed, removed from a service by individuals within or without the government. So, how do we detect the fraud? Usually, it's through tips and external audits, um, but our rate of detection is much higher in, in government than it is in the private sector. Anyways, uh, so the AFCE, sorry, the AFCE study that was conducted found corruption in only 26% of government cases, while all industries experienced corruption, almost 31% of fraud cases. Financial statement fraud happens less often in government as well, with only 4% of fraud cases, including a financial statement fraud element, as compared to almost 11% across all industries. So, um, go on to the next slide, and I ran out of paper. Okay, sorry. So, what do we do for property to prevent theft? So, managers who have operations that involve capital equipment, or either, and, and tools, are responsible for the effective and efficient operations of their, of their, of their section. So, if they have a missing resource, or, um, they're, they're, they're responsible for ensuring that it's there in working order, and they would notice, and they would tell us, so, ultimately, that, it comes down to them having a clear idea of what's present, and then making sure that it's there. Uh, so, we haven't really noticed any issues with that, um, you know, we do have some things that are capitalized, that are on, that are on the accounting inventory, but those are the major, large assets, and we've never had an issue with any of those. So, we, in accounting, we check for procurement issues, so, other departments purchasing things are usually more intent about buying things than accounting, we don't really have a lot of capital, we don't have a lot of need for equipment, so, we act as a, kind of a backstop, and final, the, the fence, the, the last, the line of defense. And so, when we look at people's request for payments, we verify that, that it matches to our purchasing policy, as well as looking at it to, for its veracity, is it correct, is the items, goods and items, makes sense to what's, the department's... Is the items, goods and items make sense to what the department's operations are? Is the entity look like a real entity? Does the, does it foot? Does it look appropriate? I have had personal experience in detecting fraud of that kind before. Usually the invoices are not professional-looking. They're incomplete. They're inconsistent. They have bogus addresses and bogus information on it as well. So in terms of what, what is being purchased isn't appropriate. So, so we are looking at that in accounting. So our other large asset is our cash, as you could see. And how we control that was that we have at least two people involved in every dispersment cycle. And our major dispersment cycles are basically payroll and accounts payable. So there's at least two people looking at it over. There's at least, there's only two signatures over cash accounts, so access and authorization is limited. And there are three other people that are always looking at, well, not always, but can look at our major checking account where all of our activity goes through for these dispersment cycles. And those two people are, two people are looking at it all the time and they're not signers. And there are other, two other people that can look at activity whenever they want to if they choose. So they can always check on that. We, no one who's receiving cash is doing so in isolation. We have, you know, visual line of sight. They're out in the public. We also have cameras that watch them as well. So, and then reports and deposits are verified by at least one other person to ensure accuracy. And then we review payments in the AP dispersment cycle multiple times. So there's a high probability that we would detect any kind of that fraud. So the major types of fraud, we would be able to detect, there's always going to be an indicator of some kind, you know, within the documentation we receive, especially over time. So, and then we lock up any cash or checks if, that we may have if they aren't deposited. But we try to deposit everything every day, so there's very little risk of, very little actual cash or checks at risk at any time. So I, I hope that helps answer that request to, to talk about what we do to prevent fraud. But I, I mean, I have a lot of other knowledge of specific incidences. If you ever want to come by and talk shop with me, I can swap stories with you. But, but I, I've been pleased to be here for so many years and not seen, you know, barely a twitch of any kind of thing that would amount to what the article is talking about from the AICPA here. So it's been a very happy transition for me to come into an organization that doesn't have any indication of systematic problematic issues like, like this article's speaking of. A lot of it has to do with the attitude at the top and the patience and thoroughness of fellow employees to basically comply with what might be onerous demands made on myself to produce backup documentation and corroboration of, of major purchases. And then, you know, Carrie's guidance and insistence on adherence to our purchasing code is, is, is basically the, the best thing we could have in terms of preventing any kind of fraud from employees at the bottom. The other thing is, Carrie asked me to tell this joke.
No, I don't.
No, no, no. So, so the, the other two things, the, the two people who have, are transacting and controlling the dispers, dispers, dispersment cycles, well, actually three of us, none of us like each other, so if, there's no possible collusion because there's no amount of, of, yeah, there's no amount of backing each other out of that situation, so, so we're, we're good. Yeah, so.
Are you done with this?
Yes, that's it. That concludes my report. Are there any other questions?
I do have a comment.
Go ahead, Council.
I know that you are getting ready to plan and prepare for the next budget cycle. And I know that it's a long process that involves a lot of people, including community representatives and including our council. Unfortunately, it's limited because of quorum issues, but three of the council members who are going to be attending have been on council for many years. And the two of us and maybe the third, who just got elected, would really, I think, speaking on my own behalf, and obviously from my questions, need to understand this process more thoroughly. And so I'm imploring you and Carrie to think of a way on how anybody on this council can be included in those discussions and observations, even if that means having an open session.
Thank you for your request, Councilmember Royer. I'm just a facilitator.
Well, I guess there, there are two options. The, if we'd like to have the entire discussion about all items in the budget, we can do that in front of the whole council. We did it some years ago. The staff still prepares the budget and, you know, based on certain assumptions with the economic outlook and the council policies that we have in place and the projected revenues, things like that. And then with the CIP and other ongoing contracts and expenses that we have from year to year, we build that into it and then we can balance a budget and present it to council and start the discussion there. Or we can work through a smaller committee or work just with non-council members, citizen committee. There are lots of options that we can do what council chooses to do.
Well, the last couple of years, last couple of years, I note that there's been a budget workshop where all of the council members get an opportunity to look at the proposed budget, question what is in it, and then, you know, base any decision that they're going to make in the future on the information that they gather then. And I, I found it to be a great opportunity for people to actually understand the nuances of the, you know, the luminous Cave Creek budget.
The, there includes, we can include a budget work session, but prior to even getting to the work session, there's a draft budget that is prepared and provided and a hard copy to all of the council members. And then there's a time period built in for each council member to schedule meetings with not only Robert, but any and all department directors to, you know, answer their questions. It might be one particular department or there might be several, but that does give you an opportunity to kind of get a feel for what are the projects, why are they the priorities and what assumptions went into determining that department's budget. And so that, that will remain the same, that, that part of that, the process is there before you even get to a work session.
But there is a workshop and it's open to, or invitees. How many people are included in that?
The, the work session is a public meeting. Anytime there's a quorum of council, it's a public meeting, there's an agenda and there's minutes, and you, you can go through as much or as little detail as you need. It's completely up to council.
Well, the budget prep meeting that you were talking about in emails, what meeting is that then, that I'm not able to attend because?
The staff meets to go through, we prepare a draft budget and then we have a meeting or two meetings, I think it's scheduled for over two days, of just going through department by department over, say, a half hour, forty-five minutes, bouncing that off these other folks. Here's what it is.
I'd like to come. I'd like to make sure I come. I need to understand and I want it to be in front of other people and I want to hear what other people's questions are. And I think I need to learn this process in depth.
Well, actually, you know, I guess I got a different, different perception on what goes on here, since the staff are the ones that deal with the daily running of the town and, and we're policymakers unless we have some particular thing that we're interested in, in giving more funding or less funding to, then really, I don't really think we have that much or should have that much input, but.
I disagree. We are responsible for the fiscal, we're fiscally responsible for this town.
And we are, and we are fiscally responsible. You can disagree all you want, but the, but the bottom line is they know what's going on every, all, every day.
And our decisions are based upon the budget.
Yeah. And we get a chance, we get a total, we, we go through the, in the workshops, we go through the things page by page, line by line and look at everything, so, you know, I don't know.
I, and I think there's plenty of time for the council as a whole to be part of it. When we sit down and do this, I've only done it once. My first time, four years ago, I felt I was micromanaging and I needed to step back. It's not my authority to tell them how to do their budget. Mine is to listen and then they go through the budget. The questions eventually come to you, to the public, and people can then be involved. It is their budget. Unless you know everything about the water plant and how much they pay for everything that goes into it, I think those are the bigger pictures and that's what we look at.
Yeah, my intention is certainly not to micromanage. My campaign was based about around not man, micromanaging the staff. I feel compelled to better understand.
And you will.
All of our fiscal issues of this town and how much is budgeted and what kinds of things are coming up over the next twelve to eighteen months. And I would like to just be a part of every step of the way as a newly-elected representative. And I, you know, I guess I have a problem with incumbents who have been on this council for many years who get to be there and I don't. Does anybody not want to go or will you cede your seat to me? Well, that says a lot.
Mr. Sims, are you following this?
You're going to pull me in the middle of this.
I am going to pull you in the middle of this.
Well, it depends what you're asking for. What I'm hearing is that there is a process that's open in work session where the entire council can sit and get updates. To the extent that one council member wishes to interact directly with staff as staff prepares an item, then the question is, do the others wish to participate? And at that point then, do you rapidly morph into the work session? I've been involved in cities and towns where if, if one, you have, as a council member, you have every right to call and ask, but the minute you ask to be involved in the actual deliberations, everybody else on that council has the right to ask. And then, once we have a quorum, it's an open, then it's a work session. And so if indeed, if indeed only one of you wished to meet with staff, I don't think the town code would bar that. But we as staff can't deny the other six from also participating and that would trip you over the quorum, so.
And the issue the councilwoman has is there's currently three, three council members who are wishing to participate in the budget process, which precludes her unless we, unless we actually have a meeting or work session. To make, to begin, the slaughter of the hog becomes a work session issue at that point to make the sausage, you know?
And how were the three selected?
I was under the impression, though, there were two council people and one citizen. So that still leaves, I suppose, one.
No, there's three councils.
Traditionally, the vice mayor has participated and one other council member. And that's basically, it has always been interest-based of who was interested in, in kind of going in upfront and seeing what was going on. In this case, we have the vice mayor and two council members and now a third or a fourth or whatever, so that, that's where it is. I mean, we could simply prepare the budget with, without council members and prepare the draft for you and individually meet with you as is the process and then come to the work sessions and do it that way.
Here's a compromise. What if, I've done this before where if indeed, I guess there's been a mechanism where some subset of you, less than a quorum, have worked with staff to help staff develop the budget. Your point is you want to be involved.
Along with the others.
Oh, no, 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 but what I'm saying with that is either one-on-one or if there's three in this group, have the same meeting with three in a different group. So, I mean, if you wish to do that.
You know, I will, I will withdraw my request. I don't mean to cause a lot of trouble here. I think the intention is all good and I hope that people recognize that, that I am a newly-elected official, I have a lot to learn and I'm willing to admit that. But in this case, others who have been here longer than me have, have a greater right than I do to be there because they responded more quickly than me. If that's how it works, that's how it works.
And, and, Councilmember, what I said was if you wish to participate, I think we can figure out a mechanism to allow you to have the direct involvement that the other three have in a way that doesn't violate the open meeting law and allows to have that full and frank discussion before it becomes the work session. That would be an option.
Except that I don't want people to have to duplicate their efforts. It's a long enough process to begin with.
When we have, when they have a preliminary budget worked out, that's when we do the first, the first workshop, work session. And the department heads are here to explain any questions that we have as, as we go through the things. I think that's kind of really what you're shooting for, except, you know, that's kind of the way it works, so.
Mayor, perhaps I could just clarify and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, but in the years that I've participated, the, the members who were sitting and meeting with the staff going through the budget, we weren't making drastic changes, pulling things out necessarily or putting things in in recent years. It really was, here's the budget, here's why it was in, bouncing it off and saying, well, you might have a problem, this might be an issue, but generally the issue, the, the projects were still there. So it was presented as a balanced budget to council, but with an explanation of, here's what we have, here's why it's in there. But if there was a conflict, we either left it out or left it in and let council decide to put something in or take it out. We weren't just, as a small group, changing the budget drastically and taking things out and putting them in. We were proposing that and bouncing that off and it still all comes to council. So I don't want anyone to leave with the idea that this is something different and you're making changes to the.
I understand that completely.
Well, my experience happened to be that, I think Tom and I, that was my first experience, and it was just the town manager and, and you. And I think it was just two of us.
I think David, weren't you?
Was David, I don't think David sat because that was, and it was just listening as they were going through the budget and the reasons why and the utilities that we have and so on and so forth.
It occurs to me that I've allowed this to get way off the topic from the presentation.
Let Robert clarify one thing, though.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to clarify, the budget process, initially when I, when I joined, this first phase of it was actually to engage the citizenry in the budget kind of founding or formation. And then one or two council members joined and then ended up being predominantly council members. But it was really to kind of check that box off the, off the kind of list of things that are desirable to have in a budget process in terms of citizen, citizen engagement, I apologize for my pronunciation, my mouth is really dry. I'm, I'm really sick, but I came here anyways. Sorry, just kidding.
Well, that's to be commended.
Anyway, so.
We need their involvement.
Forget whoever uses the microphone.
They're very good, either.
No, I know, I'm sorry. They're very dry. Anyways, yeah, so it was really about citizen engagement in that first part and the second part was, there were two alternatives to the second part, and that is either we present to each council member separately in order to inform and, and get their feedback, or we present it to you in work session where you're all present and it's a, it's a public forum. That was kind of the, the gist of everything that had been done before. And that's kind of where I had basically suggested to continue that process. It just, you know, preceding town managers, it just kind of changed in, in terms of their view of exactly how that should happen. And, and I'm just a facilitator in this process and I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, open it up to however, I'm open to whatever Carrie decides, so. Regardless, regardless of how many evenings I have to be here.
You know what? I will step down and Catherine, you can take my place.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I, I think this has gotten completely out of hand.
I didn't have to go this far.
And to accommodate you, Catherine, I'm more than happy to do that.
Well, that's appreciated.
I hope it goes well.
All right. Any more questions from council? There is public comment on this issue, item. Do we have any? We have none. Seeing and hearing none, moving on to agenda item number two, presentation. Wait a minute, let me take. Wait a minute, let me take my breath first. Presentation, council discussion of the quarter, utility briefing to council, including matters listed in the town of Cave Creek water policy best management practices and project updates.
Mayor, members of the council, the quarterly report presentation was actually prepared by Brian Meaton, but he was unable to attend today. He's out ill, was not in the office, and so Jim Kaler is here and is going to wing it, so to speak.
Wing it? Okay. Mayor and council, just a short update on what's happening in the utilities department during the last quarter. Let me make sure my, oops, what am I doing wrong, Brian? There we go, got it. Okay. And feel free, just, if there's questions on each slide, just jump in, we'll talk about them. These are the total million gallons produced on a monthly basis, 2017, 2018. You notice that December is a little higher. Actually, 2018, many of the months, most of the months were higher, with the exception of May. I'm not too sure about why, but I like the revenue.
Yeah, I have a question, then. Why does, on my graph, 2017 looks substantially higher. It was less than 2018.
I'm sorry, you're right, yes, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, and why is that?
2018 was lower, yeah. Weather, obviously, in winter 2018 was a little colder than we saw last year.
Do you have a reason why it would be consistently lower across that entire year?
I don't. I don't, I haven't looked at the detail of 2017. I don't have a reason why it would be consistently lower month to month, but I can certainly look at it and get back to you, see if there's any anomalies that show up.
Looks like somebody calibrated the meter in June of last year.
Or replaced the meter. Yeah, or replaced it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, when did we change the vein down at the cap?
I don't think that was 2017, I believe. It was earlier than that. But let me look into that. I wasn't here in 17, but-
That could be the number for, that'd be nice to know, wouldn't it? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Leaks repaired per month, just a metric of what's going on in a leak repair. When I was here the last quarter, I mentioned that each one of these leaks can cost between $3,000 to $4,000 to $5,000, depending upon the size of the leak, the location of the leak, et cetera. So you can tell that five to 10 leaks per month in the month of December is not unusual, but we have many more leaks in the summertime, because a lot more water, a lot more pressure issues, et cetera.
I have a question.
Yes.
Speaking of leaks, I believe it's a leak, in the town utilities director's report, there was 100,000 gallon water loss-
Yes.
-due to a company that drove over our line. Who pays for that?
Robert, they were billed, if it's a leak that I'm, if it's a leak that I'm thinking you're talking, speaking of, it was a contractor that drove into our, actually, they dug up our lines.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct, and it was approximately a $4,000 bill that they did pay. Oh, good. Thank you.
And that would be consistent all the time. Somebody destroys the line, and we lose a lot of water, they're gonna pay for it.
Okay, very good.
Cave Creek Water System, these are chlorine residuals, and let me explain why we even talk about this, especially for the new council members. The MCL that we talked about in the, we've talked about before, four chlorine residual is not less than 0.2 milligram per liter, not more than four. If we exceed either the high or the low, we could violate an MCL, and those are tier one violations. So we watch the chlorine residuals very carefully, in both the Cave Creek systems and the Desert Hills systems. Now, having said that, I will say that in future months in 2019, we are reconfiguring some of the sample locations to be more representative, and we will probably be decreasing those residuals, because we have a more homogeneous system and a sampling protocol. So that, for example, there are many sites in the town that might have 1.8 to 2 milligram per liter chlorine. If we go four or five miles away, we have a sample location where it's .4. Something wrong. It's not, that's not representative of our system. And so we're looking at some of those sample sites that have been around for years and years, and taking a look at, or not taking a look at it, we're gathering the data that we can submit to ADEQ to reconfigure some sample sites that are problematic. And if they're problematic in the wintertime, come July, August, and September, when it's really warm and the chlorine dissipates rapidly, we have a lot of problems. So our goal is to get these residuals that are in the 2 and 1.5 range, down in the 1 to 1.5 range, certainly by this time, by the springtime, so that we don't have to put so much chlorine out to get the residuals.
Mr. Kaler, Jim?
Yes.
And thank you for coming back again. I want to say that you spent a lot of time, that you were here temporarily working on chlorine.
I did.
And there is a, if there is any variable in the water system that is important, it is chlorine. It's been said that the most important public health advance in the history of the world, it's not penicillin, it's not all these drugs, it's chlorinated water. People, Orville Wright died of typhoid fever from unchlorinated water. And the town has spent a lot of time, this is the safety. Safety, reliability, cost, this is the safety. The town has done a superb job on keeping the town with both safe and reliable water. And I thank you for your efforts in the last year or so.
Appreciate it.
Jim, you've done a nice job.
I appreciate it, thank you. We also are taking many more residuals on a monthly basis than we were, so in case there is any system deficiencies, we pick it up every week. And so that's been in place for about seven months now. Same discussion on Desert Hills. Those residuals, we hope to bring down with some additional sampling points that are more representative of what we need to meet. Cave Creek wastewater system, you can see that October of 2018, we were up around 266,000 gallons a day. We're now down to about 242, which isn't really significant. But for the new council members, our normal summertime flow is about 300 to 310, right, bouncing around 290 to 300,000 gallons daily. Maintenance project completed in the last 90 days in water treatment. Just an update, we started shutting the treatment plant down in first one week or two of November or October, and coming offline between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM. After about three or four weeks of that, we noticed that we were, our pressures were increasing as the water was flowing back down the CAP line south, to a point where we had excessively high pressures, and so we had to begin, and that stopped us from keeping the plant off, because we needed to keep that pipeline under pressure, underpressurized, rather. In the last two months, the check valves on the pipeline have been replaced, at least one or two locations have been replaced, and the testing took place a week or two ago, and the back, the check valves are no longer leaking, therefore, we don't have high pressure when we go south in the pipeline, and therefore, we're back to operating the plant about 17 hours a day, rather than 24 hours.
Because of check valves?
The check valve, yes. The problem, the problem, I knew you were gonna ask that question.
Go get some more of them, let's get some more and go down to zero.
Yeah, yeah, we have 300 feet of elevation, so the check valves was leaking back and over, and hitting about 150 PSI as it went south. And so that, the pressure in the line-
Static pressure-
Static pressure.
Was leaking back through the check valves.
Yes.
And how is that affecting flow to the plant?
Well, it wasn't. It wasn't affecting flow to the plant, but the pressure in the line was, with each hour after we would shut down, we would see the pressure increase, and we didn't, we were at the design, close to the design pressure of the AC pipeline. So we needed to keep the water flowing, so we didn't have that excessive pressure.
With 660 feet of elevation change-
300.
Feet of elevation, 300 PSI of elevation, about?
150, 150.
Okay.
Yeah.
But anyway, you can overpressure those lines if those check valves leak all the way back, correct?
We could.
And you have your centrifugal pumps running backwards, which ruins centrifugal pumps.
Exactly, yep.
They're important, maybe a PM program on that. Where have I heard that before?
We're getting new ones now. So we've replaced the check valves. We also replaced chlorine discharge valves at the treatment plant. We installed a new effluent meter for the golf course pond, which has been in progress for many months. We put, we originally put a meter in that didn't do what we wanted, and so we had to go back to the manufacturer and retrofit and return the other meter, but the new meter is working fine, and at last, we've got a great total of what is going to the golf course on a month-to-month, day-to-day, month-to-month. Recoded filter number two, as you recall, we rebuilt all the filters in July and August, August, I believe. One of the filters, the small, one of the small filters, one of the three older filters evidently had had some acid damage. We're not sure why, none of us were here, we couldn't tell why, but we evacuated and shut that filter down, sandblasted the filter, recoded and repainted, and that filter is, it looks like a brand-new filter now. So that project got done. The other filters do not appear to need that kind of expense. It was about $36,000 to sandblast, recoat, and repaint. All the filter drains are cleaned at the treatment plant, a lot of periodic maintenance happening at the treatment plant that had been postponed over many years. All the filter surface wash devices, which are devices that clean the media, the top three or four inches of the media, none of them had been operational for at least 10 years. They're all back working now, cleaning the media the way it should have been cleaned. Of course, all the media was replaced, and then the ferric chlorine, chlorine, should say chloride dosage was reduced because the raw water turbidity was low in the winter months. Any questions on that slide? And here's the most important part of the update. We've got a group of CIP projects, the CIP CAP intake booster station, Phase 1, we talked about it back in November, it was completed, the Phase 1 was completed. We met with Primatech last week, I believe Thursday, and they will be providing, I believe we might have it already, I just haven't seen it, their fee structure for design of the Phase 2 project. The design originally was anticipated to be seven months to a year. Last week, they committed to be able to complete the entire design on all four stations, including the CAP booster station, in six months, so June, July, maybe. So that will be coming, the council will see that in the next 30 days, I'm sure. Certainly, we want to get it to you, because it's a budgetary item. The design will either, approval of that design will lead to a six-month design effort, followed by a, about a 10-month construction effort. CAP SCADA evaluation, we met with Quantum again last week, did the same exercise with them. We'll be bringing that to you for Phase 2 design, and they committed to a six-month schedule also. So if both of these designs are approved, the SCADA would be completed, and the booster station design would be completed by June. CIP sewer collection system improvement, I believe that Brian was talking about our Rancho Manana lift station. That effort is being completed, probably is completed now, I just don't have the paperwork. But the, the, the objective was to look at Rancho Manana lift station, find out if it's large enough for the inflows that we get during rain events, inflow and infiltration, and if not, come up with a wet well project to expand the wet well to hold, give us more detention time in that wet well. We have the capacity in the eight-inch pressure line going from the booster station, from the lift station to the treatment plant, the wastewater plant, but we are short of capacity in the existing wet well. And CAP SCADA, I just talked about, I'm not sure whether it's on, oh, that's for Desert Hills, Cave Creek, and et cetera. But it, basically, that is a six-month design effort, and we will get that back to you soon, within two or three weeks. Questions?
Questions from council?
No questions, but I'm directing this more to Carrie, I guess. This packet screams for water loss analysis, the slide. If 20% to 30% of our water is being lost to one reason or another, it's incumbent that we know what that number is, and that we take, go into an analysis step to see what can be done. That's water we pay for, we pump up here, and it never hits a meter, we never get, we never get revenue from it. So I'm very eager that the will-serv information and those two join this packet of reports.
I can give you a little update, is that right, Carrie? We heard that, Bob, for the last seven months, so we knew that those were-
You've heard of seven, I've been saying it for five years.
What we're looking at, what I'm trying to do right now, and we're in the process of dealing with a couple membrane people, the anaconda for water that comes from backwashing and out to the lake is a large number. And the only way we can recycle that is if we do some sort of preliminary treatment. If we try to put that water back into the beginning of our treatment plant, the Safe Drinking Water Act, Rules and Regulations, Surface Water, 1993, said we can only recycle 10% of that water back at one time, 10% of our influent flow. So the thought process is, well, we're looking at sizing a small membrane unit or other kind of treatment unit at 200 to 220 gallons a minute that would treat that water, and then allow us to pump that water not only to the lake, but also to portable standards. Which is preliminary right now, though. We're looking at that as we speak. Hope to get some numbers in a month.
Anything else from council? All right, there is public comment on this, and I think you've got a slip on this. Fellow in a green sweater wants to talk to us.
Carrie Smith?
Her jacket.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Carrie Smith, Cave Creek resident, 7265 East Condole Mountain Estates Drive. Thank you, Mr. Kaler, for a great report, and I want to express my appreciation to the town manager and Madison Edens for preparing materials for the Water Advisory Committee associated with the commitments that the town has made to provide water. And indeed, the notion, the item on the agenda talks about water policy best management practices and project updates. We didn't hear very much about water policy yet, and what I'm recommending is that in the course of this report, that in the future, we get more on water policy. I asked Carrie Dirick to circulate, and I think she did, a draft copy of a table that Madison Edens prepared for the last meeting of the Water Advisory Committee, which is exceptionally helpful, but it's only a draft, it needs additional information. So if we just take a minute and look at it, the item that I'm particularly interested in is the middle three, this is columns four, five, and six, will serve acre-foot estimates, which give you by town, Cave Creek, Desert Hills, and Carefree, the acre-feet commitments under a variety of different estimation procedures, the minimum amount committed, the maximum amount committed, and a kind of middle ground of estimates in comparison to the scheduled acre-feet. Now, we have 2606 as our cap allocation, so we have more than the scheduled amount in principle, but as you can see, under the maximum acre commitment with existing will-serv commitments, not necessarily acted upon, but things that the town has committed to provide-
to provide service for, the number is actually negative, 541.88 acre feet. If we were to include the full 2606, that number would go down, and obviously, that's a maximum, and that assumes all of those will serves would be acted upon, which they won't, but nonetheless, it suggests to us that we may be close to fully committing our water. The reason that's important is because last week, on January 31st, the legislature did its part and passed Arizona's drought contingency plan. Now, there's still other plans to be passed and acted upon by California and Nevada in order to meet the Bureau of Reclamation's requirements to reduce the current cap allocations so that Lake Mead does not fall below the threshold associated with a mandatory cutback in cap water. What that translates into is that 2606 is not a realistic goal for what our total water available would be. I don't know what it is. I don't think anybody knows what it is yet, but it's going to be less, and that means as part of our evaluation of water-related issues, I'm not sure what time interval is prudent, but certainly, once or twice a year, it would be worthwhile to have a summary table like what Madison has prepared, including not just the cap water, but also the status of the Desert Hills wells, and whether they are reliable or not reliable, because that's another source of water, and any other sources that we have available, so it's possible for the council and citizens to monitor this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Councilman Morris.
Mr. Smith, did the drought contingency plan that was actually passed by the legislature, did it envision any cutback in the tier, we're in tier two, or, yeah, we're in tier two. Tier one is the farmer's water mostly and interruptible, and was there any thought that tier two would be cutback in the plan?
The honest answer to that is I don't know. I saw before the legislature acted, I looked at a draft of the drought, of the Arizona drought contingency plan, and to be candid, I couldn't understand exactly what it implied for us. So I asked for the next Water Advisory Committee, that staff, in particular, poor Madison Edens, try to figure out exactly what the acted-upon drought contingency plan means for communities like us, because the WAC has on its agenda the preparation of the town's drought contingency plan, and I, I'm the chair of the subcommittee trying to do that, and I want to be informed about what the state is doing and what it implies for our cap allocation.
I have a suggestion. Jay Johnson, who is the general counsel for Central Arizona Project, is a Cave Creek resident, and he is intimately aware of all the details of the drought contingency plan, and I would think that he would be very amenable to meeting with the Water Advisory Committee at its next meeting to update the committee on the status of the drought contingency plan.
That'd be great.
From my, from my information, a shortage to municipalities could be as soon as 2022. So it's around the corner.
Yeah, I just don't know. I mean, the implications, what I was particularly concerned about was the implications of the plan that the legislature passed, which, assuming the other states come up with their plans, will have implications for us, and presumably, there will be a timetable laid out in that plan, and we need to be ready and planning for that.
If I know the date of the next WAC meeting, I can ask Jay to attend if that's appropriate.
It's actually a week from this Wednesday.
Oh, a week, okay. At what time?
Six o'clock.
I'll try to make that happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-oh. I wondered why you were still here.
Because I was told to be. I do what I'm told. No, no, I, no, and just briefly, DCP has been a convoluted craziness that has involved everybody. The big group that's taking the loss right now is Pinal County farmers, so there was a group of, like, there's some grick water, there's some crit water, there's some Epcor water that is being implemented, or being diverted to help the Pinal County farmers, so they're the ones that kind of took the brunt-
The hit.
...at this stage. Councilmember Royer is correct, there's some potential in the future, but we're looking at that and making sure as we go through it. It's a, it is, it is a mess. There was some, I think the governor and the legislature worked together to get this done at a time so that the bureau, Brenda Berman, who was, used to work for SRP, and John Kyle, who's the commissioner of it, said, "You guys fix it or I'm fixing it," so they were able to come together and get a DCP. Now we're all kind of watching for some other states, but it is, it's been all hands-on-deck trying to get that thing done at the last possible minute. It got done. And I, I did appreciate Dr. Smith talking about that Madison has put a lot of work into this, as has Carrie, to try and get something, and we've been talking about this for a long time, and I, and Councilmember Morris and I have discussed that he's seen some movement in the right direction, I think Dr. Smith's saying that, so that's helpful to hear.
Do we have any more slips? Are we done?
Salute.
Boy, you're quick.
I'm praying for the right word.
Okay. So I guess, I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor? Do we have to, do we have to vote on that? Nah, we're adjourned.